Sheriff Catherine, thank you, thank you for being here. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight for beautiful evening in Northeast Tennessee. And we, as always, we begin our meetings with identification and the absence of the proper note. Mr. Purple Road has agreed to lead us in that. So Terry, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody bow your heads, please. I must count loving dear heavenly Father. For we thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to be here in that. Lord, we just like to do what the people's business is, Lord, but according to your will and your way. Lord, we ask you to be with all the ones that has sickness, has troubles. And Lord, we just ask you to go with us, search each and every one of our hearts. We don't know you, Lord. We just beg you, Lord, to just be merciful till we accept you as our Savior. Lord, go with us. Lead God direct this need. And when ever fail, give you the praise, honor, glory for it all. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Terry. Sheriff Catherine, would you listen? Looks like all of our commissioners that are here are in their seats, so we will, I'll ask the clerk take a roll call. Now clerk, take a roll. Board, open please for your attendance. So everybody checked in. And we have a call on the lease, although we will be voting. And now clerk, take a, uh, take a roll.
Sixteen present, eight absent.
Thank you. Summer vacations and things get away and we hope those folks who are getting rest. Next up on our agenda, our guest speaker, Clark McMake, recognition and presentations. And I just spoke before the meeting with Judge Goodwin and asked if he would be willing to give us an update on the baby, baby dough money that you so generously contributed to the Northeast Tennessee Regional Recovery Center. And Judge Goodwin and anyone else that'd like to speak to that, I know you all been on the road. Judge Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to come very briefly. I know y'all have a lot to do. First of all, I want to thank you for the resolution when we were here last time, promising Sullivan County's baby dough money for the Northeast Tennessee Residential Treatment Program. I think I got that name right. Just to give you an update, Judge Street, Judge Rice, Judge Boniface, and I have been going to as many county commission meetings, city, mayor and all of them meetings, council meetings as we can. I can report back that we've got commitments from Hamlin County, Hawkins County, Carter County. We're still working on Washington County. Those are the big ones that we've been, we've been to Johnson County and got a commitment from them. So support for the program is widespread. We have, to give you an update on where we are, the, and I always get this name wrong, I don't know why. The First Tennessee Resource Development. Is that right, Mayor?
T R A, First Tennessee, yeah.
So what we've done is they've, they've committed, they've not committed, they've developed a subcommittee of that organization to basically be the board that will oversee the spending of the money once we get it all pooled together. We've had, we've got, I think, the officers in place, just for the, for the startup, bylaws in place for the startup. And if you'll recall, the way it's going to work is that one member for each governmental entity that signs on and gives money to the program will have a seat at that table. All right? And they will, they will oversee the facilities, they will oversee, we, the judges will run the court. They will oversee the facility side. Families Free is in the process of getting a one-time, one million dollar grant and a recurring 1.3 million dollar grant to run the program once we get it going. So I just wanted to let you know that that ball is rolling. We have a lease for that facility in Rome Mountain. It's a five-year lease for a dollar a year. So we're, we're full steam ahead. We've got several more counties to go to. We're trying to hit all the counties and governmental entities again before September first, before all the changes of the county commissions and the boards and all that change. And the main thing I wanted to do was thank you.
Anybody got questions for the judge? It's quite a, they've put on a lot of miles.
Yes, ma'am.
And Judge, let me see if I can get your mic on. You're in.
Did you say you all had approached Washington County?
Yes.
Okay. So they haven't really?
We're, we're, we're in the H U, H E Health Education Welfare Committee of the Washington County Commission right now, along with a bunch of other people who are asking for money. They, they informally told us that we're going to get a good chunk of money. Haven't told us how much, haven't officially done it yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'd be happy to answer. No? Okay.
Judge, thank you and thank Judge Street, Judge Rice, and Judge Boniface. Like I say, you all put a lot of miles on cars.
So far. Got a lot to go.
We appreciate the effort.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I would mention to the commission, I guess at this point, I was speaking to the King's Fourth Chamber Board of Directors last week, and we talked about the jail and the fact that this county commission has planned for the future unlike, was written in the paper, that we're making the same mistake the one in eighty-eight did. And I explained that we had to, we planned this jail for additional two hundred fifty-six prisoners if we need them. But that jail's not the answer. What Judge Goodwin and his cohorts are doing is the answer. That's the answer to Northeast Tennessee's problem. And it's not a big step, but it's the first step. And a hundred people's lives will change when this facility is opened. I know we have other members of the judiciary here tonight, and I believe they're here maybe to speak on an issue, and I will recognize them at that time. We'll have, Tom, would you, Randy, look and see if we have any public comments up the center?
No one more.
No? Okay, we'll, we'll record that in our record. And since nobody got signed up, I'll, I'll give, anybody that might have come in and not seen the sheet, and I'm prepared to speak right now if you, if you'd like to. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed. Moving on, I'd like to recognize those folks that are Republican nominees for Southern County Commission that are here tonight, and they've been with us a couple of times. And I'll recognize those that are attending, but it's important. And congratulations on being a Republican nominee, and we wish you well in the August fourth election. Next up, review of resolutions. So item number one is our resigning resolution. We'll move on to item number two. I believe that's Commissioner Glover. I recognize you.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two is a resolution to request officials of the Southern County judicial system, representing Southern County courts, to review provisions of a Southern County pay-to-stay program and discuss ideals designated to require an inmate to repay per deemed cost of thirty-five dollars and or utter costs for their stay when committed to the Southern County jail for any length of time of twenty-four hours or more. The cost of imprisonment is tough on the judiciary, judiciary commitment of Southern County players, taxes, to house inmates separated apart from our society. And the Southern County Board of Commissioners has determined that it is the best interest of Southern County to establish a plan to charge inmates for their stay at a rate of thirty-five dollars per day. Paid charges constituent with appropriate medical costs, dental procedures, eyeglasses, lavatory tests, elective education programs, vocational education programs, meals while incarcerated in Southern County jail. And inmates paying for the cost of incarceration reduces the capability to inmates seeking incarceration and an alternative to have payers of taxes pay these costs on their behalf. And while Southern County is the beneficiary of solid sales tax proceeds, that remains a desire to institute a practice that assures these proceeds promote a robust process for expending the proceeds on behalf of payers of taxes in the residence of Southern County. And inmates can provide appropriate community service at time of minimum wage to expend responsibilities for their pay-to-stay obligations. Pursuant to the provisions of the Tennessee Code, Section four, one dash four, dash four, one, four, two, the Southern County Jail Administrator is authorized to access the amount of all fees pursuant to these charges associated with an inmate's incarceration. This resolution would require two-thirds vote of this legislative body and firms the request to adopt the provisions of the Southern County Pay-to-Stay Program. At this point in time, I'd like to thank each judge and the folks from the court system that came tonight to help us with this program and answer some questions for us if we have some for them. And I hope each and every commissioner will address their concerns and ask about this program. The reason why that I'm asking for this resolution to pass is because the amount of money that it's costing the taxpayers of Southern County each time that an inmate comes back or is incarcerated. And we all know that if you do break the law and you're found guilty and you do need to be incarcerated, that needs to happen. But repeat offenders that's using our jail as a revolving door apartment complex, we need to do something to correct that. And also, an inmate, and we've sat here and talked about this for over three and a half years now, about getting them back in to a positive role in the community. And what better way to do that if they're locked up? If we give them a responsibility to do and a job, they can get reimbursed for that job. They can pay thirty-five dollars a day back to the county. That other money that they earn can go into an account. So when they do get out of jail, they have a little nest egg that they don't have to go back to doing what they were before they were there. And also, while they're in jail, they're not on drugs, they don't have access to alcohol. And I think by them being sober and straight, they'll see what they can accomplish and what they can do as, as a person. And we're not asking these inmates to do anything different than we do every day. We're just asking them to be a productive citizen, work and pay their share of taxes and help the county taxpayers in a positive form and manner. And I've got some numbers for you that I just jotted down here. Right now, I would say, and then the sheriff could probably touch on this a lot in a positive manner than I can, with the, with the inflation and the cost of food and, and everything going up like it has. I know a month or so ago, we passed a resolution for the sheriff's department to add some money on. I think it was two hundred and seven thousand for food and medicine and some other things for the sheriff's department. At one time, I think it was about forty, forty-eight dollars a day, something like that. I would say now, like I said, the sheriff can touch base on this, I would say, just imagine probably sixty dollars a day. All we're asking for is a portion of that, thirty-five dollars a day for, for help of food and water. From what I understand, when we passed this resolution, the, the food cost was about sixty-nine thousand dollars a month. Water was about twenty-one thousand five hundred a month. That's just the food and water. That's not counting the medicine and not counting the other provisions that we've been providing for the, for the inmates. And if you figure that up at, at this nine hundred inmates, that's fifty-four thousand dollars a day. And when you times that out over a month, you look at that, a million six hundred and twenty thousand dollars a month. That's nineteen million four hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. When we open up the new jail, that's providing five hundred more beds. And the reason I use nine hundred inmates as a number, I, I used that number because it's fluctuated each month that we've been here. And I use that because I don't know exactly how many state prisoners that there at this point in time. So I know sometimes it's over a thousand, sometimes it's less than nine. But I'm using the nine hundred as a, as a number to explain where I'm going with this. When we add on the five hundred new beds that we've talked about, you know, ninety-three million dollar jail, that's going to be ninety thousand dollars a day, two million seven hundred thousand a month, thirty-two million four hundred thousand a year. And that's if that jail was that capacity of fifteen hundred people. Folks, that's a lot of money. And that's, and, and if you go back and look in the years past, even when the folks were at the old jail, I think the most that they had there sometimes was forty, fifty inmates, something like that, maybe sixty. And then we built the new jail, and the new jail was designed, I think, to hold six hundred fifty people. And back at that point in time, food costs, your water, everything else was at a affordable rate. And the taxpayers of the county didn't pay really that much attention to it. But at this point in time, in the future, we're going to be taking a lot of money from the taxpayers' hands and putting it into inmates that's, that's, that's incarcerated, that other departments of this county is going to need to run the county in a positive manner in the future. And I think it's something that we need to look at now and work toward solving this problem before we get to the point of the thirty-two million four hundred thousand. And it could be more than that when we get to that point. I have talked to several inmates that was in jail in the last six or eight weeks. And each one that I talked to, there was four of them, all four of them told me if something like this was available when they were in there, that they would have, they would have done it if they could have been processed through the procedures of allowing them to do this. And from what I understand now, we do have three or four or maybe five inmates now that participate in a, a program where they go out and work during the day and then come back into the jail at night. If we're doing it for four, we are able to do it for forty. If we're doing it for forty, we are able to do it for a hundred and forty. If, if the process is handled correctly and they have received the okay to do that. And in this resolution, when you read it, the thirty-five dollars a day, if we collected it, would be right at twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand dollars a day, just an example, which would be eight hundred and ten thousand a month. And if we collected all that, which we know is probably not going to happen, but if we did, that would be nine million seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year back in the general fund of the county. And now that nine million seven hundred and twenty thousand, the sheriff and the sheriff's department would keep ten percent of that. The other ninety percent would go toward payoff of the jail bond, to get it paid for. The ten percent that the sheriff would, sheriff's department would get each year when we do the budget of the general fund, out of that ten percent, six percent of that he could use for raises for his employees. That would save the taxpayers of the county money. And the other four percent, he could use for upkeep of his jail or where he sees fit of repairs, painting, whatever he needs for the new jail plus the old jail. I think it would be an incentive for the employees to help us make this program work because they know that if this money's collected, that there will be a pay scale advancement for the employees of the jail. By sitting and doing nothing or trying something different than we have in the past, we're not going to know if this is going to work or not till we try it. And it's a proven fact that doing things the old way and not making some changes is not going to move Southern County forward. And like I said, this is not asking these inmates to do anything that we don't do every day and that is to work in some manner, pay taxes, and be a productive citizen of Southern County. And in the past, another problem that we've had is you didn't want to take the inmates out. And let me say this before going further, this resolution is not intended to undermine or try to micromanage the sheriff's department. This resolution is to try to get some money back in for the inmates that we house and incarcerate every day. It would be an advantage for the sheriff's department to get this extra money. But I think an example that I'd like to make is when we done a few months ago, or a year or so ago, the ankle monitors. We were hoping that that would, the ease the burden on, on some of the crowding and get some of these citizens into, or these inmates into being productive citizens again. If we have those ankle monitors and they're not being used, they need to go on these inmates and they need to, they need to work and they need to be productive for the county. I know there's some folks over on the jail, out of the nine hundred, there's probably three, four, maybe five hundred that don't. But the ones that we can get to work is a plus for the county. And the taxpayers of Southern County have asked for something like this. I know Commissioner King went door to door, I went door to door, and I, I don't know about other people's areas, but this is one of the hottest topics in their area. They just don't want them sitting in there doing nothing. They don't want them sitting in there watching TV. They don't want them sitting in there, you know, playing on a computer. They, they want them to, they want them out. They want to see them doing something productive for the county. they, they want them to, they want them out, they want to see them doing something productive for the county. So with that being said, um, we do have some judges here tonight, General Stoll is here tonight. And I wanna thank each and every one of you all for coming tonight. I wanna thank you for being here. And I, I hope that we can reach a common ground point on this to where we can make something like this work. Because the more of these people that we get into the county as taxpayers, it's gonna help all of us. And I know that some of these companies that's working with some of these people, uh, I think in the past, some of them just went on to be full-time employees of that particular company, and that's what we want. But in the past, the reason that some of these inmates didn't get out is we was worried about them bringing things back into the jail, was worried about them bringing drugs back, was worried about them, uh, you know, bringing things back into the jail that didn't even be there. But now we have a body scanner. And, uh, if we send them out, bring them back, it can go through that body scanner, and there shouldn't be anything entering unless something was the malfunction with the body scanner, and I'm, I'm not saying it happened, but at this time, I would, uh, I would like for the sheriff or, or any of the judges that wants to come up and, uh,
I'll just get started on the, uh, we have a lot of programs, Ursula, making it work, we got a three million dollar grant for families three and one eighties, so we have those individuals working, uh, with those ankle monitors, we take them to work, work all day. Money goes into the savings account, pays their fine costs, ankle monitoring, wants to give police that money in the bank, so. Uh, but I'll, I'll leave, uh, the other judicial system, talk about the pay to stay, if that's okay.
That would be great.
Thanks, Sheriff. Mr. Gibbons?
Um, my name's Andrew Gibbons, I'm a district public defender, for those that don't know me, the judges ask me to speak first. But I would like to address this, is the resolution, as I read it, doesn't include anything for this work program, and first of all, as a taxpayer of Southern County, I appreciate the stewardship that the commission exhibits in these issues. However, my concern with pay to stay, um, as I read that resolution, is it's going to unduly burden the people in our community who are at least able to bear the burden. And I'll give you the example, if you have two individuals who are arrested on the same day, charged with the same offense, one has a family who has means or property, and they're able to bond out of jail, they would have to pay zero to the county for the state to pay. You have another individual who comes from a family that lives in poverty, charged with the same crime, he may have to stay in jail nine or ten months, waiting on a lab report, waiting on the court system to work. And now you've added an additional ten thousand dollars roughly of court cost on somebody who already was unable to even post bond to get out of jail. If you look at the statistics that are provided by the sheriff's office, roughly fifty percent of the people who are in jail have not been convicted of any crime yet. So they're merely citizens of this county who are accused of committing crimes. But they are unable financially to post whatever bond is set by whatever judge that they're in front of to get released from jail. So they're sitting, awaiting adjudication, waiting on lab reports, trial or whatever. I would encourage, uh, any type of work program, I think that's great, I've seen them be successful. I, I agree that inmates shouldn't be sitting idle. But when someone works their way through the system, and they have completed their obligation to the county through serving a jail sentence or being placed on probation or whatever, they're giving a printout, they're giving a printout of what their court costs are. And you're talking even on a misdemeanor case, sometimes several thousands of dollars. And sometimes that is an insurmountable amount of money for people when they're coming out of jail. And that's just the court costs that are assessed by the legislature or already placed on there by the county. Now you add an additional amount on there, thirty-five dollars a day, some, there, there are inmates, and I'm sure, uh, Captain Carswell can back this up, there are people sitting in that jail that have been there for a year or more awaiting trial, awaiting adjudication of their cases. You add that amount on to their court costs, then you're gonna put people in a hole that they will never dig out of. And they will never be able to be productive citizens of this community, of this county, if we put a weight on them and a load that they can't bear. I'm all for giving people, uh, opportunity. I'm all for having inmates be productive, I don't like them sitting over there idle. But I think we can do that without forcing them to pay, uh, to stay. They're already charged fees to see the doctor, they're already charged fees to see a dentist. So there's no reason to unnecessarily burden them. I agree, they've committed crimes, some of them have committed crimes, they need to pay, they need, they owe society that. No one would disagree with that. But let's not put these people who are maybe trying to put their lives back together in a situation that there's no light at the end of the tunnel. When someone comes out of jail, they come through the court system, and they may have two or three thousand dollars in court costs. To somebody even in a minimum wage job, they may look at that and say, I can do this. But if you add another ten or twelve or fifteen thousand dollars on there because they've had to pay thirty-five dollars a day for every day that they were incarcerated, they won't even make an attempt to pay. Because it seems like that is an impossible amount of money. And I think it, this will actually have the opposite effect of what the commission may intend for it to have because rather than attempt to pay a small amount of money, they won't pay anything. They'll say, I can't do this, this is a hill too far, and just not pay anything. And then what happens is they end up back in jail because they didn't pay the court costs. And I, 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 I understand, uh, Mr. Glover's intent with this. I, I understand the sentiment and I appreciate it, I think this is wrong-headed, and I think it's the wrong approach. And I think it will create more problems for the court system than it will solve. Uh, uh, if we can have a work program, put these guys to work, the ones that are able to work, but don't, don't put another financial burden on people, that they're already, most of them too poor to pay what we are asking them to pay.
Could I respond to one here?
Yes.
What about the financial burden that we're putting on the taxpayers that, uh, that are out here busting their rear end for fifteen dollars an hour? They, they try to do the right thing every day, and they pay their taxes, and they take care of their children. But every time that we turn around, we have to raise taxes to pay for some of these programs. We have to put the burden back on them, and they're the ones that's trying to raise their family.
If I could, if I could interrupt, this, um, and I'm sorry to do this because but this is a public hearing, and Mr. Gibbons has it, has his opinion, and we generally don't debate in that, uh, uh, Mr. Glover, and you all might wanna talk about it later, or after, after we're through, you make that statement, but we try, try to keep the debate down with our guests, so. Andrew, do you wanna close?
Well, I, I just would encourage, uh, the commission not to go forward with this resolution. I, I don't think that, um, I don't think it will produce the, the desired result. Um, and that's all I would say, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Ursula, we have anybody else that wants to speak?
If, if one of the other, uh, judges wants to speak on the answer and answer some questions, I would, I would love to entertain that.
General Stoll is in a little bit.
Okay.
Mr. Gibbons, Judge Gibbons, does that need to go?
General Stoll, sure recognize.
Uh, I, I do believe that, you know, this resolution is commendable in that you're trying to find a solution, you're trying to find, a reason and a way to take the burden off taxpayers and law-abiding citizens. I, Commissioner King and Glover, I do think it's commendable that you're trying to find a, a innovative way to do it. But I have some deep concerns, and not because I want the taxpayers to pay more money, my concern is whether it would work or not. And one of the things I think about, I deal with victims every day, who for the most part are taxpaying citizens who are, um, you know, they separate the hands of criminals. Well, our priority's always been trying to get restitution back to victims. And I'm concerned that if we take these monies that, uh, we divert it from the victims getting restitution for a lot of things, whether that's, uh, medical bills for assaults and violent crimes, or whether it's financial, uh, home fraud, elder abuse, murder, rees thefts, uh, we routinely seek, can judges impose restitution? And I think that's always come to the head. And I'm thinking, my concern is, is if we have a program like, one of my concerns is it would divert monies from the revenue stream to victims first, getting the restitution and getting made whole, and that's very difficult as it is with, with the existing cost of fines. And if we add another layer, my concern is the victims who I think should have a priority in our criminal justice system may lose that. That's one concern. I think the other concern is there are certain monies that are earmarked, uh, for like the, uh, we have a, uh, committee here for courthouse security. And some of the monies that we generate from fines and costs have, uh, gone to protect the citizens who are public servants here in Southern County. As you know, we live in a dangerous world, uh, the tax on the court system, so that committee, which I'm a member of, and the judges are as well, we've gone about the last few years using fines and cost money to make the courthouse safer for the public that visit, but also the employees from the county that work here. And I'm concerned that some of those projects would, uh, um, may not, uh, become to fruition, we cannot complete some of the tasks we have. And we think that's a priority, is making the citizens of Southern County, the taxpaying, law-abiding citizens, and the employees here who work every day in the criminal justice system at the courthouse, to make them as safe as possible. My concern is some of those monies would be diverted as revenue streams that we get from fines and costs, uh, would, would dwindle. And we would have a safety for our citizens. Again, folks that do pay their taxes, people that do work, do come to the courthouse because they're jurors, or they're witnesses, or they're victims, or they're employees. So those are the, some concerns that I have. And, and the final concern would be, what would be the cost of instituting a system to recover the money? Now, those that are in the jail and you're recouping the money, what about the folks that after they get a bill, they've not paid the full bill, or not paid any of the bill, they get out? How do we go about collecting it? I mean, do we have, do you hire an attorney to file a lawsuit? Does, does, um, Mr. Street, does he file lawsuits and pay fines, pay costs into the system to get a judgment? And then how does he collect it? How much does that cost? And do we send a bill to everybody? Do we have to have a separate billing department? Who's gonna serve the papers? Who's gonna show up in court? Where are we gonna put those people in the docket? We're gonna add to the court docket? We're gonna add, uh, additional administrative costs because those people, if they owe, will have to impose those costs. I assume the way we would do it, we'd go to court and get a judgment, then try to garnish the wages if they have a job, or get their assets if they have any. And then that's gonna cost money, and serving process is taking away from the sheriff's department, serving process on people that have absconded or, uh, or are seeking to arrest for new crimes, or violations of probation, uh, or violations of, uh, pre-trial release. So I could see that, uh, we might expend a lot of money, we'd have to have someone to keep up with all these people's bills, how much they are total, how much they've paid, and where they're at. And I see that would be, uh, could be a, you know, tremendous administrative struggle. And it could be expensive and time-consuming, and maybe in the end, uh, what we project we collect might be less than that, and what we spend on trying to get it may be more. So those are the concerns I have. I mean, I don't know anything for sure, I'm just, this is just my experience of twenty-seven years of being a prosecutor and looking at the court system and seeing people impose fines and costs and restitution, and see how successful we've been in the past in collecting money. We've, we've made a lot of efforts to, to do that, and the judges are very conscientious about collecting that money, and I think adding another burden could, instead of producing more, uh, revenue for the county, might actually do the le, might do less. And, and, uh, as Mr. Gibbons said, for some people, it might be so overwhelming, they just give up. I don't know about that, but I know that if there's a breaking or a point in which the cost would be so much to collect that it would outweigh the benefits of trying to get it. So those are my concerns. And of course, you all are the county commission, and you'll have to weigh the positives and the negatives, determine what's in the best interest of the county. And I know everybody's got their best interests, and, um, and my, so my concerns are that. And, uh, take them for what it's worth, and I, I know you all will do the right thing, so thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, anyone else must speak, uh, on this, uh, Judge Gibbons?
I'm back.
You're recognized.
Like, like what, the nickel you can't get rid of, I just keep turning that? I, I appreciate the invitation to come and talk to y'all about this. Uh, and like the two before me, uh, General Stollis and, and Andrew, I wanna commend you for trying, for thinking outside the box on ways that we can defray the cost of the new jail. And I know that's sort of at the bottom of this. And I say that based on my reading of the, uh, resolution because ninety percent of this money is to go to the general fund to pay down on the jail, uh, obligation, that bond. And only ten percent actually goes to defray, um, the weighty cost of imprisonment, as it says here. Uh, I'm just gonna, I, as a judge, I have to be careful what I say for a multitude of reasons, but one of which is I can't, as a judge, give what's called an advisory. I can't come in here and say, um, based on this resolution and my understanding of the Tennessee code, this is what a ruling would be in court. I can't do that. I can, however, as a citizen, uh, who happens to be the criminal court judge and work in the system, I can give you some of my thoughts and ideas. And like General Stollis said, you take those, you weigh the pros and the cons, and you have to make the hard decision. Okay? Um, the first thing I wanna say is that the biggest obstacle I see to this as a practical standpoint is collection. Other than, and, and nowhere in here does it say how, I think my mic just got turned off. Can y'all hear me?
Me.
Uh, need to wait. Did I do something?
No, battery's dead.
In the future, we will ask people who are gonna speak at the well, bring batteries with them.
If you give me a minute, I can run the house. Is that better now? Can you hear me better again?
Great, thank you.
Uh, I, I don't see anywhere in here where it says that, uh, uh, provides for a mechanism, um, to collect these fees. Uh, are they going to be administered as court costs under Tennessee law? I don't know. Is General Stollis gonna have to hire more assistants, um, to have a collection department within the DA's office to collect these fees along with other fees? I don't know. Those are questions you all will have to figure out if, if this goes forward. I can tell you the one thing that will not happen, uh, because it's contrary to state law, is I, I can't put these folks in jail for not paying their fees. So if their thirty-five dollar a day fee adds up to, let's just say, uh, Mr. Gibbons' ten thousand dollars, and they're coming back to the end of their probation or the end of their sentence, what cannot happen under Tennessee law is they cannot be held in jail any longer because they haven't paid the fee. Okay? If, if they're out, they can't be put back in jail. On court costs and fines now, I have dozens of defendants who come to court every six months to report to me on what they're doing as far as paying fines and costs. months to report to me on what they're doing as far as paying fines and costs. Sometimes we have probation violations on those folks, but I can't hold them in jail. I have to give them an OR bond, they're booked in, they're booked out, and then they have to come to court, and if, and if they, you know, I've got no, use the carrot and the stick analogy, I've got no stick, and none of the judges do, to force these people to pay, because I can't put them back in jail. And they know. So that's, those are issues that, if this goes forward, you all will have to sort of navigate. Another issue that I have, or that I think should be discussed, at least, is the, this that these people are using the jail as sort of a revolving door apartment house complex. I can say from my experience, for the eight years that I've been on the bench, and for the 14 years before that that I was an assistant DA, and for the several years before that that I was a private practice, that in no jurisdiction that I've ever practiced in have I found that to be the case. People are in that jail because somebody in authority told them they had to be, or put them there. And that's either the sheriff, the police, or me. And I don't know how many of you all made it, but probably a year ago, there was a meeting here in this room called by Senator... What Senator Barry called for bond reform. What was his name? Sen, the Senator?
Yeah, from, from...
He's from Middle Tennessee somewhere.
Middle Tennessee.
Anyway, the Senator from Middle Tennessee. Those of you who were here, some of y'all were here, and you heard his, his presentation. And what had the burr under his saddle was the belief that the majority of the inmates in the county jails across this state were, were there because of some unfortunate situation, but they were hardworking, and they had jobs, and if they could just get out of the jail, they'd go back to work on Monday morning. And I think that's a fallacy. I think that the reason that the majority of these people are in the jail is because they refuse, not that they can't, they want to be productive citizens. They won't hold down a job, they won't go out and pay taxes. And I think that before you implement a pay-to-state program, y'all need to discuss that. Y'all need to have an honest discussion and debate about just exactly who is in that I had another point, and I forgot what it was. Any questions? I know this is not a time for debate, but I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Judge, would you have any, as a citizen, would you have any suggestions on how something like this could work?
That was the point that I forgot, that I forgot. I'm glad you, you're a good straight man, Mr. Glover. I think that the only way this, and I haven't talked to the other judges about this, because in hearing Mr. Glover talk about the resolution and the purposes behind it, and in talking about a program that the sheriff's office got a grant for, this...
Making it work.
Making it work program, thank you, Sheriff. I think that if you have a program like that, where you are actively going out and trying to get people who will work jobs, I think you then, you tie a program like this to that. So if they're going out of the jail on this back-to-work program, that they're coming back every night to stand, I think that you could justify making them defray part of their costs, because you've, you've developed a program that gets them out of the jail, gets them back to being productive. And I think that's the way that this would have to go. Because then they're getting paid every week, every two weeks, and I am assuming, I keep, I hate to keep turning around, I know, but you, do you keep their money for them while they're in jail, or do they?
Bring them out of their cell, and they go through the...
Well, when they get paid, where's that money go?
Can I explain that?
Yeah.
So far, what we do is, and what's made this program successful, I guess I understand up here, with a small amount of people. And another thing, for sure, that body scanner has helped, but it has not stopped contraband coming into jail completely. And of the 14 or 15, we'll have three or four that'll try to bring contraband, even after going and working for the Robinette Company all day. So it happens, it's just, they've got issues. But half of the money that they receive from their wages, they keep in a savings. They pay for the ankle monitor that they must wear every day, which is about $7, $8. And the other half goes to court costs. We had one gentleman, I think he paid close to $10,000 off in court costs and fines. So when he was released, he was free from his debt, and he had a job, and he's doing very well now. I see him at the Westridge Grad- graduation, and there is the ability for that to be successful. We're still in the beginning stages of this, and there's a lot of, a lot of more work to be done. But they at least have a little bit of money, and the ones that are really trying, you know, it's such a small percentage right now, we've got, we've had less than 20 out so far. But we have to be very careful, state law kind of governs what we can and can't release out to work, too. So there's, there's a lot of questions, we're still learning in the, in the early stages, like I said, but I wouldn't want to punish those 10, and it's not going to make a big difference if it's like 15 or 16 inmates that are actually out working, you know, charging them $35 a day, when they're actually trying to do something good. So, and they are having to pay half of it to their, but if you want to tax that onto them, that would be fine. But we're still pushing probably around 600 felons in Sullivan County jail right now. So those would not be eligible to go out, and I don't think the citizens would want us to release those out, because they'll be bringing meth and everything else when they come back in, because they're, and, you know, we, we have incidents all the time. And what I'd really like is for, you know, you all feel free to come, I've really never had anybody come over to the jail and speak to me about this whatsoever. But I've got people that are busy every day, but they'll stop and show you what we're up against. But we're trying to reduce this population. I know we, we've met with the DAs and the judges and the public defenders, we've had at least six meetings with the county attorney over the last four or five months. We are, we are trying, but there's just an epidemic drug problem right now in Sullivan County, and I don't think anybody has, there's a lot of different things that need to happen before we get out of this. And, you know, part of what Judge Goodwin talked about as part of the solution, getting work opportunities, mental health opportunities, there's just a whole lot of pieces to the puzzle. There's not one silver bullet for this, but...
Thank you. Please. Judge?
I think that in other ways, that the people who are on work release, I mean, that's a program by the sheriff's department to get people back out working, maybe you could tie something like this to that as well. But I think that, I think that for it to be successful and to get anywhere close to the result that you, that you're hoping for, is it's going to have to be tied to something like that. Otherwise, we're just going to, we're going to saddle people with lots and more debt, and they're just, they're not ever going to pay it. And that, I mean, that's the reality.
Those folks that are working now, that he said were paying their fines and fees, that's the example that I was kind of making, these other folks could work, too. And I think that $35 a day should come out of their, their pay also.
Well, I think if, I think if you've got somebody working who's serving the sentence, I don't disagree with you. They, they need to be paying their debt.
Because if we look at the big picture, like I said, of being to go, and I'm not saying this in a bad way, we do have a problem in the county with drugs, and I think it's, it's not going to get any better. And with the good things come bad things. This, the casino coming to Bristol, Virginia, that's a good thing for Bristol, Virginia, but that's, in my opinion, is going to be a, a burden for Sullivan County. And I think the 500 beds that we're building...
I think, I think we're straying a little bit.
Could be full before the paint dries.
It'll be, just my opinion, it'll be full the day we open it. I, I had talked to several commissioners, just one-on-one, small groups, back when we were deciding how big the jail would need to be. And I always said, build it as big as we can, build it, build it, build it, max it out, as big as we can make it, and then turn around and contract with the feds to house their inmates to help pay for it. So, I mean, if you really have wanted to defray the cost of that jail, that's the way to do it. Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, is it appropriate for me to ask a couple of questions?
No, the judge is asked, if anybody wants questions, you go ahead, yes.
All right, thank you. I've just been reading the bold print to this resolution, and it's asked, the commission would be asking the Sullivan County, should this pass, Sullivan County judicial system representing Sullivan County course to review provisions of a Sullivan County pay-to-state program and discuss ideas designed to require such a program, et cetera, et cetera. We've talked about this in a variety of opportunities, and it would seem to me its complexity is far beyond a up-and-down vote on such a resolution. I don't know if it's appropriate, I'm kind of new at this, and I'll be gone soon, so if I create any problems, you know, it's...
We need to see if you have a question for the judge.
So my question is, would it not be appropriate to set up a task force to review this and report back to the commission at some appropriate time?
I don't mean to sound flippant, but that's, that's a question and a decision that you all have to decide on yourselves. I can't give guidance. I feel like I sidestepped it, though.
No, I totally agree with you, it's...
Okay, we, we have an agreement not to agree. Do you have another question, Barry? Okay, anybody else have questions? I've got Commissioner Starnes and Gardner and Stanley on the board, but I assume that's for the sponsors, so...
I just have one question.
Well, is it for the judge?
I just want to know if, if it's working somewhere else in the state of Tennessee, is it already, this is not your idea for it?
Yeah, that's not for the judge, let's, let's, we'll answer that, we'll answer that, but surely, you gotta let the sponsor answer that. You have any other questions for the judge? He's kind of given us this time, let's go ahead and finish up here if you have questions for him. If you don't, then we'll get to, Judge Goodwin, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate you all. Any, any other members of the judiciary who want to speak on this while we're in recess?
I will be very brief. Thank you for allowing us to come, and it's nice to see all of, all of you. I don't know that I can add a lot to what the other speakers have, have given to you. What I would say is that I think the idea is certainly commendable, and, and from a place to help this county, and I think those of us that are here all have a heartfelt desire to make Sullivan County the safest and best county that we can. What I would say is to second or third some of the comments that you all have, have heard tonight, which is, this is a very complicated issue. It is, it is, you have constitutional concerns that you have to consider, you have to, as far as from a judicial standpoint, I think the implementation of this bill is, is of the most concern for those of us that would be dealing with it. I will say this, and, and one thing that I don't know how much information as a commission that you have on the Making It Work program that the sheriff's office has implemented, and I'm seeing it in practice. It is an excellent program, and it's one that I hope that the sheriff's office will be able to continue. But I think Officer Carerswell, Sheriff Cassidy, and others can talk with you, maybe not in this setting, but individually, about the difficulties of implementation in that program. And, and what that program generally entails is finding suitable candidates, and that would include candidates who aren't violent offenders, candidates who are not felons, and so you're pretty much considering misdemeanor non-violent offenders for that consideration for that program. And then they have to be selected and vetted through the sheriff's office. They have to have a substantial enough sentence to be able to get through the initial committee and through their training. They have eight weeks, I think, of training that they have to go through before they can even be released to a job. They have to have a willingness to do the program, to get through the training, and then to begin working. And so as a result, that means that the number of inmates that are eligible for that is, is a smaller number. But the positive of that is that if they get through that, through the training, and they begin working, is exactly what you've been told tonight, which is, they are working, they are paying off their court costs, they're paying their fines, they're paying restitution to victims who might not otherwise get restitution. And then, in theory, when they're released, the company that they're working for, I think Robinette Company is the one that, that the sheriff's office has been able to utilize, then they have an opportunity to have full-time employment, and they have something, and the sheriff's office actually goes even one step further and assists them in setting up the bank account, and assists them in if they need a birth certificate, if they need a social security card, because you have to have all that to be, to get a paycheck, and a lot of the people that are incarcerated don't have that. And so as I'm talking, and I'm telling you how this program works, to illustrate the complexities of, of going through the process and getting people who can, who are eligible, and who can do it. And so I, I think that that type of program is something that is, is very important, and I think it's good, but in considering this resolution, having that as a backdrop to say, okay, this is kind of points and place, and this is how we have to be thinking about implementation of something like this. In addition, the concerns about, you know, constitutional issues of people, and the fact that, and you all probably know this, the vast majority of the inmates in the jail are, are not employed. And so you have to also then have the ability to pay, so you have to make sure that they have a job. And that's a, that's a whole nother, I guess, issue that, that will have to be considered. But I know that myself, I know that Judge Goodwin, and General Staubus, Mr. Gibbons, all the people involved, Judge Conken, would be willing to have you come to our courts anytime and kind of get an idea of, of what we see on a daily basis, and certainly would be happy to, to discuss with you whether or not the implementation of a program like this is, is possible. But I certainly commend you for your motivation in doing it, because I know that the motivation is to help our citizens, and I think that's what we all want. So thank you for your time. I won't ask for questions, but I'm happy, on an individual basis, at any time, to discuss it with, with any of you, and to meet with you, and, and have you up in Bristol, so thank you.
Thank you, Judge Nelson, then. Judge Conken, welcome back.
Welcome back. Ray Conken, I'm one of the sessions judges in Kingsport, and I'll, I'll be even more brief than Judge Nelson. Yeah, I can echo everything, I've agreed to everything's been said. I have a little bit of a different perspective, because I've sat where you sit, I did two terms on the privileges, or, or two terms here on the county commission, sat with the, Sam and I sat right over there and tried to keep it straight. So I understand how hard it is, especially right now at budget time, you know, this is the toughest time of the year for the, for the commission and for the county mayor, I know it is. And I appreciate and I applaud the originality, the creativity... Uh, and I appreciate and I applaud, um, the originality, the creativity, um, trying to come up with solutions, trying to think outside the box. So, you know, you're, you're to be commended for that. On paper, um, I, I think this is a great idea. Uh, the people who are committing crimes, uh, need to be paying for, for the costs that county taxpayers are incurred. As a practical matter, will it work, and I think that's the question, uh, that, that has to be answered, before we, uh, you all decide whether to go forward with the program or not, you know, will, um, the cost of the program be outweighed by what's collected? I'm curious, Andrew, um, what do you think the percentage of the docket that your office gets in Sessions Court?
Eighty percent.
I was gonna say seventy-five, but, but, uh, he says about eighty percent of the cases that are heard in Sessions Court, uh, people are represented by a public defender's office. Well, how do you get a public defender? You fill out a three-page form that shows your income and your assets, you swear under oath in front of me that that's, everything's accurate, and then I have to find that you're indigent. And eighty percent of the time, uh, eighty percent of the people, uh, are, are approved to get a public defender. Well, you know, what is indigent? Indigent means not working, no income, very little income, only disability income, something along those lines. So, if those numbers are right, seventy-five to eighty percent of the docket are indigent, cannot afford to hire an attorney. The one person who might keep you out of jail, or help you get a plea, uh, to spend less time in jail, you can't afford that person. Are you gonna have money to be able to pay for this program? Just something to think about. Like I say, I, I applaud you for thinking outside the box, and, and it, it can, if it's workable, that's great. Um, but, but I think you have to weigh, you know, what program's gonna cost versus what benefit we might get out of it. So, uh, I appreciate the invitation, uh, to come up here and, and, and address, address the commission, echo what Judge Nelson said. Please come to, uh, Kingsport General Sessions Court anytime you want, uh, see what we're dealing with down there. And, uh, you know, I, I think it helps out, I remember very, uh, when I first got elected in nineteen ninety-four to the county commission, uh, the first thing we did was a, we hopped on a bus and took a tour of all the county properties, Jake, or, or things the county was associated with, from Jacobs Creek, you know, all over the place. Seeing it firsthand made a difference for me, and, and made it seem real to me. So, you know, I would encourage you, come check out the court system, uh, a lot of people go through it, a lot of money goes through it. And, uh, I would welcome, anytime you wanna come down, you're certainly welcome in Kingsport, and I think at any of the courthouses, so, thank you all.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, anyone else, uh, while we're in recess here? Certainly appreciate you all visiting with us tonight and responding to, to Mr. Glover, so we, Mr. Glover, we have several commissioners that would like to have questions for you. Commissioner Blaylock, would you push your button again, because, Commissioner Blaylock? Judy?
Yeah, well.
Push your button, because you had a good question, and, uh, I'm gonna go through the ones that are on the board. It, it, you're not on the board yet, but I'll get you. Uh, Commissioner Starz, you had a question for the sponsor?
I, I think my question got answered, um, these people will be wearing ankle monitors, is that right? So we won't need any extra manpower to go with them to oversee?
I think the way it's working now is, is the deputies are taking the inmates to the place of employment, dropping them off, and coming back and getting them that evening, and taking them back to the, to the jail.
That's what I thought, I just wanna make sure, thank you.
The ankle monitors are part of the resolution we done a couple of months ago, we're, we okayed eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for ten new deputies and the ankle monitors.
Hey, uh, Commissioner Gardner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, for the sponsor, if it's okay. Am I correct, this is a non-binding measure, and it will be up to the sheriff and the courts to implement it? I mean, even if, even if it passed twenty-four to nothing, it's still up to the sheriff and the courts to implement it? Thanks, sir.
And, and my reply to that is too, how do we know it's not gonna work if we don't try? Right now, we're not getting anything, we're not getting a dollar.
But, but the answer to my question was, it is still, still up to them, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blaylock, you ask if this been, you ask if it's been tried before?
I have asked, we've tried it, so.
Okay, uh, good, I just wanna make sure you got your, your question answered.
Judy, there are some, some other states, there's forty-nine other states that's doing this?
There are about forty-nine.
There's forty-nine other states that's doing this, and, uh, they're, they're, uh, Michigan, for an example, done a little research on them, they're collecting about forty-two percent of the money. And.
Some unsuccessful, though, too.
Very successful, yes.
I mean, some unsuccessful.
Yes, yes. But there's also jails that's offering, if you're convicted and you go in, there's also jails that's offering, if you've got the money to pay, but put you in a cell by yourself for so much a day. So, I mean, that's happening. And, a lot of states are going through the same thing we are in Sullivan County, as, as far as the, the astronomical cost of, of doing this. And the example I made was just, like I mentioned, go, right now it's nineteen million, four hundred and forty thousand. When we go up to fifteen hundred people, it's thirty-two million, four hundred thousand. Now we got a decision to make.
Commissioner Stanley, I, I dropped around you, and I apologize, you're recognized.
My question was for, um, Captain Carerswell, I guess. Um. How many? How many did you say that we had of felons?
Uh, we got close to six hundred, that's counting pre-trial, uh, most, most of them are all pre-trial, split in five.
So, are the ones, those six hundreds, they would not be eligible for any kind of work release or anything, right?
No, I don't think anybody wants a, a felon, I mean, I, personally, I wouldn't wanna do that.
So, do we have the manpower to do the work release?
We can take them, we're running two, we're running several things out of that, what you talked about, uh, Commissioner Glover, as far as, uh, we've got pre-trial release that we're running out of that, we're starting work programs, and we're doing a lot of rehabilitation programs with that. It's not just one thing. Yes, we do, and, and we're trying to expand it, uh, I know Jay Street, we're looking at getting this next class to get him some workers out. But we have to vet each and every one of these, uh, these misdemeanors that are eligible for this, it's not like they're all eligible. We can't put them all out. I don't think you all, if you, if, if you want them all out, you probably need to come over and spend some time with us, and you probably won't agree that, that they're all not gonna be eligible.
That was my question, if, you know, it looks good, you know, as far as, and I understand what Commissioner Glover is trying to do. And, but I don't think that when you've got the felons out here that can't get out and work that money off, and they keep postponing trial dates and stuff, you know, that's more money that's building up on them. That was my biggest concern, was the manpower, and then the ones that could not, that would not be eligible for the program.
And state law does prohibit us from releasing certi- certain, uh, charges, certain DUI convictions, uh, third DUIs aren't eligible.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, um, I believe that, um, Commissioner Harper, you're, you're recognized.
Yes, I, I've read the resolution, and anytime you have a resolution that is, uh, got questions to it, it's a, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good resolution. And, uh, it doesn't mean that you have to do everything exactly the way it's written. But what, what it does mean, like, for example, when the public defender got it up and said that you had inmates to have to be incarcerated, and no fault to theirs, uh, because they have them into the court system, the only way to fix that, just say, you have to be convicted of a crime before the plot starts ticking, that you have to pay the state. So, uh, there's all kinds of ways that, uh, it, if everybody works together, uh, I appreciate all the judges showing up, appreciate the, uh, Attorney General showing up, uh, that shows that they, we've all got an interest in this. And it shows that we are concerned about the taxpayers of this county. I think this is what it, it needs to be focused on, is how we can help the taxpayers of this county. But also, make sure that if you've got a work to, uh, release program, that, uh, the people, the taxpayers of the county are gonna be safe with the people, uh, on the jobs. And there's just, there, there's a lot of questions. But, you know, with, with our judges, the way that they're, uh, uh, they've got very, very smart minds, in my opinion. And they can really, uh, I think, look at a problem and, uh, really provide part of the answers to it. But we just can't say no, that we do nothing. And the reason why we can't say no, that we, uh, do nothing, is because that's not fair to the taxpayers of this county. So I, I appreciate your, uh, I appreciate the hard work you put on this resolution, Commissioner Glover.
Thanks, sir. If we need to change that wording to after conviction, that'll be fine.
Well, I, I believe that.
If you wanna do an amendment to that when we have a meeting, I, we'll, we'll look at that.
I think that will answer your question.
Thank you.
Mr. King, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Sitting here and listening to everybody, uh, that got up and spoke, um, I heard a lot of negative, this, this is not gonna work, or there's reasons it probably won't work. But I never did hear a suggestion of what may be done, or something else to this resolution that would help it work. And not only are we obligated to the taxpayers, but we're obligated to our jail, of how many inmates can be in that jail. And is it gonna be certified, you know, when the new jail comes out and we're done with it in two years? Are we gonna be, uh, have a population that we can live with that will be certified, or is it gonna be full the, the day we open the door? And, and that adds more, um, that adds more money to, uh, provide, uh, the upkeep of the jail and, and the inmates in there, so, um, you know, thi- this is maybe a start, this may be a, um, i- if this is not, um, what people want, there, this is not what, uh, our, our judges and DA and sheriff, if, if they think that this is not gonna work, then come up with a, a, something that will work, and bring it to us, and let us implement, get it going. But what we're doing is not working. My, you know, and I've been to the jail, I've walked, been through the jail, talked to inmates that's been in jail, and, uh, you know, there, there, I think there's plenty of things that we can do if we just try, but I, I don't, I haven't seen a whole lot, you know, I know we've had meetings, I attended the meeting you was talking about when, uh, it was here, and listened to both sides. And, um, since that time, what's happened? I, I don't, I haven't seen anything, uh, a whole lot, uh, that has happened since that time. Uh, we spend a lot of money on ankle bracelet stuff, you know, that's something, that's a start, and I hope that, that works. But, when, when somebody goes out here and commit, uh, create, you know, they, uh, do a crime, and they're caught, and they come over here, you know, and they're put in our jail, then that's our responsibility. And it's also the taxpayers of Sullivan County's responsibility. And, um, I guess this year, when campaigning, out talking to people, this is probably one of the most, uh, that I heard, issue that I heard is, you know, the jail, you know, spending, you know, seventy million dollar bond, and, you know, it's gonna probably cost ninety million, and, you know, I've, I've heard the whole gauntlet of, you know, what we ought to do to these prisoners, you know? You know, what they used to do, and what they can do, and what they can't, but, you know, I, I still, I'm, during listening to all that, I never did hear a idea or something that come up that, uh, I thought would be worth, you know, implementing. Several months ago, I heard something that Knoxville, they've got a program, uh, that they're not putting their inmates in jail, going through a magistrate, there's a system, got a database, your name's in it, um, and I, I heard that they was looking at this. Uh, the sheriff is the one that's telling me this. What, what were we at on that, if we looked at that, is that something that would be doable for Sullivan County? Also, in Sullivan County, we got all kinds of jobs that we could be doing. You know, right now, the sorting cardboard, we, you know, we can use, I don't know how many we're using right now, but we can use a whole lot. Sort of cardboard, there's all kinds of jobs and stuff that we could do in Sullivan County. We're gonna have to pay for these jobs, one way or the other. Could we pay the inmates to, to help do these jobs? Give them some money to, you know, maybe, uh, create a, uh, climate to where, you know, they, what, they know what it is to work and make money. Some of these, uh, inmates probably don't know what it is to make money. Maybe they've never had a job, don't want a job. But, you know, do we sit here and do nothing? Or would you work, and everybody put their heads together, and surely, with all of us thinking and looking and seeing, is there something that we can do? Is this resolution perfect? I don't think it is, but it's a start. And if we do nothing with the resolution, then I think that's something that we, we've dropped the ball. And if somebody else can pick that ball up and, and come up with something better, let's bring it forward and do it. But sitting around with the same old system and same stuff, I, I don't think that's gonna give it. And our taxpayers, the ones that pays the taxes, pays the bills, they're the ones that are raising the cane, that y'all need to go out and do something and change what, what's going on. And that's what I heard. And, uh, you know, so, if, if you don't think this is the right way to go, come up, come up with something and, and, and bring it to us, and let's look at it. We'll try something different, if this is not what you all wanna do, let's, let's try something different, let's get something. Get out here and, and research a little bit and see, you know, this, this thing didn't drop in Herschel's lap. You know, he had to go out and, and, you know, talked about it, talked to me about it, and asked if I, you know, joined him, and I did, because I think it's important. Not only, there again, and sitting here looking at town. I, I wouldn't go in that jail over there, I'm sorry. I've been over there, and it, it's not, it's not a safe environment. That's the reason that we went to Georgia and looked at other jails and stuff to come up with a zone that is safe. And that the new jail that we're building, I think's gonna be a whole lot safer than what we've got. And that's, uh, the safety of our deputies, the safety of our inmates, I think all this comes in, but, uh, it's got, there's a price tag to it. And that price tag goes back to our taxpayers. I think we ought to look at what Knoxville done, I think that is something that we need to look at. If it's working in Knoxville, why can't it work in Sullivan County? Uh, is there something somewhere else? I know when we went to Georgia and went through the, the jail down there, they was talking about how many of their prisoners went all over the city and worked, their parks, cleaning, that, that's who took, maintaining, uh, their parks and stuff, that's who done it. There, there's all kinds. There, there's all kinds of things that we could do with inmates and get them out of the jail. And if, if it becomes the point that we need to pay, then that's what we need to be looking at. Because we're going to have to pay somebody to do it. It's not free.
Folks, we've been on this for an hour. Listen.
All right, I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Broton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't going to say anything, but I've listened to Herschel, and I've listened to Dwight, and I've listened to Terry. And, and this is one of the few times that I've got to step up and say, you know what, guys, we're doing the right thing here. The problem is, and I was naive ten years ago when I got involved in county politics. The entire problem with county politics is just that county politics, it's a blame game. Everybody wants to blame everybody else. Judges will say, well, it's county commission to build a jail. And then Lee catches crap because it's crowded, then Jeff catches a mess. There, there's no high-end team, there's high-end forfeit. And county politics is all about forfeit and blaming everybody else. That's ridiculous. We need to pass this, we need to get with the judges, we need to get with the DA, we need to get with the community, and we need to make something work. You know, everybody, you know, the school plan was a crappy plan, but I got accused of wanting to kick the can down the road. I don't want to kick the can down the road, I wanted to do the right thing. What passed wasn't. This is the right thing. Because this can be adjustable to what the judges want, what we want, what the taxpayers want. We've got to move forward with something. Because I've heard about the jail more than I heard about school. It's time to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, in, in closing, like you said, we've had too much time. And, and in closing, I'd like to say this. I, I want us to, just to stop and look at each other for a minute and think, we, we did build two new schools. But we spent ninety-three million dollars on the jail that cost a lot more than one of our schools did. It's sad when we're spending more money on prisoners that steal our stuff and break in our homes than we are children. And it's time for it to stop. And this is a way to make it happen. And I appreciate all the judges, I appreciate everybody coming tonight. But we got a week, you got a week to think on this, but I think we need to move forward with it. But we, when the new jail opens, we're going to have to come up with four or five million dollars. The only place to get that is out of the general fund and the taxpayers to pay it. So consider it. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate all of you. Thank you too, Mayor.
Thank you. We're in a work session, there won't be a motion, there won't be a vote. And I only regret that we haven't, we've got eight members that won't have heard that, and we'll have to hear it again next Thursday night. I usually don't editorialize from up here. But judges, I want you to continue judging, I want the legislators here to continue bringing ideas, and we'll get together and implement them. Thank you. Thank you for showing up. And gone spending part of the evening with, and, and thank you. Commissioner Glover, for bringing, bringing us something worthy of discussion. Thank you. Okay, you've got twenty minutes to finish up the rest of this agenda. I'm going out. No, I'm kidding. Out of number three, that would be on old business, and that'd be Commissioner Sten.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll turn you on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is to hire an assistant for Southern County Commission. You've seen this, we did change up the amount for it to seventy-five thousand dollars that would include salary and benefits. You can see the items listed. I see this as an opportunity to get information out, one, to the public, but also a way for us to have information shared in the commission. We have a lot of projects currently going on with the jail, shooting range, all the RPA money that's been spent, projects. This is something an assistant can follow up on a spreadsheet and get out to us and get us information. We don't have twenty-four people calling to check on things, but the information could be disseminated out to us. So I see this as an opportunity for a lot of clarity on what's going on in the county, being able to get that information out to the public. But the number one thing is, we're losing Angela here on one September. Congratulations to her on winning that Republican nominee seat. But that leaves us in a bind with, with Mayor hiring a new assistant. It may be time for a change, but hiring an assistant here, it'll get a lot of transparency out to every commissioner, everyone, have all the same information at the same time. So at this time, I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions for the sponsor, second about Commissioner Cross, who is not with us tonight. First reading, or not first reading, but work session. No questions, we'll move right on. Out of number four, Commissioner Vance is not here tonight. Commissioner Gardner, you, you just want to go ahead and move this on to the calendar on, on Thursday?
I'll be, I'll be happy to, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll be happy to do that, but I just wanted to say that this, this change of policy is already in effect currently. Currently, Sullivan County provides a twenty-five-year retirement accompanied by being fifty-five years of age, and this resolution will take that to thirty years, but does not require it to be fifty-five. And currently, there are some folks that are, have thirty years in on the job, but don't meet the fifty, the age fifty-five requirement. And this resolution addresses that, and that's really what prompted the resolution, but I will roll this to next week.
Okay, thank you. I have, just by way of speaking with some commissioners, there may be a donut hole in it. And I will, I'll get with you and sponsor and share that with you. Next up, out of number five, Commissioner Stanley, recognized on out of number five, on second, second reading, old business.
Thank you, Chairman. This resolution is to create a fund, a thousand-dollar educational scholarship, to be awarded annual to Ms. Sullivan County and Ms. Kingsport, beginning with the twenty-twenty-two crowning. I do want to amend this next week on the third whereas, where it says gift, I want to strike that gift out and put scholarship right there, so it's not a gift being given to the candidate. And then on the last, the now therefore it be resolved, I will be striking out to be used at their discretion. I will be putting to be issued directly to the desert college for educational purposes. And this is something that is in the law that the check is to be made. All of the scholarships goes directly to the school and not to the girl.
Any questions for the sponsor? Would you file those with us so we can get that and pass it out with the resolution next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. We, we might have missed something, so we don't want to do that, so you'll have an amendment in writing. I made a couple of notes there, but.
I've got it written here that I can give you.
If you can get it to Angela.
Okay.
Okay. Todd, you, you got a question on it?
Angie, I've looked into this a little bit since our meeting, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. But from what I read, this particular pageant has the highest purse of any pageant for the Miss Tennessee competition. And that's what the article in the Times News said, if I was reading about the right pageant. But that being said aside, I just don't feel like as a government entity, we have any business being involved in awarding for a competition.
This program, and I will provide that information next week also, it is a nonprofit. This is not-for-profit pageant. It is a scholarship competition, is what it is. And it's for scholarships only, and the money goes directly to the girls' college.
But like I said, when I looked in it, I could be wrong, and I'd like to find that out, that this is the highest purse of any pageant. Why should we add to it, though? That's my point. I mean, if it's already at the top, I don't understand this.
They don't only award just Ms. Kingsport and Ms. Sullivan County, but they also award the other girls that are in it. If they get second runner-up or third runner-up, they also get a smaller scholarship too, for the scholarships that come in. I will say that it is a nonprofit. And next year, they are bringing, or trying to bring, a Miss Tennessee pageant here to Kingsport admitted. It was held in West Tennessee this way.
And that's good for tourism and everything, but like I said, I'm just uncomfortable with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that, that'll be on second reading on Thursday night. We had, with the, John, I was going, just getting ready to do the recognition.
Okay.
I would have gotten you on.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and also, just keep in mind, the folks that enter these, these pageants, they, I mentioned this last time, this is not considered prize money, these are scholarships. They enter these contests for, for the purpose of continuing, continuing their education. And this, this money will come from our educate and grow status. And they're not representing county government, they're representing the county and our cities within.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Any further thoughts, Mr. Stanley? Okay, very good. We'll move on to out of number six. Commissioner David Akerd wants to rent a copier. We'll, we'll just move on past that. David will handle that with, with certain humor on the next Thursday night, I'm sure. Mr. Morrell, you're recognized on out of number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be rolling this over, of course, to next week. But I did want to just touch on a few things and just kind of refresh your memory a little bit. This resolution is actually accepting a Tennessee Department of Transportation planning grant in the amount of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars on that. We applied for this back, by resolution, back in December of, of last year. And the state of Tennessee has awarded it to us. And if you remember, it was a, it was a tra- traffic study, a transportation study along the Weaver Pike corridor, coming out of the city of Bristol, down to below Sullivan East, the new Sullivan East Middle School. There's roughly about, I think there was, there's roughly about fourteen intersections intersecting with the Weaver Pike corridor that this scope of study is going to encompass on that. Amber, for it has, she has actually took the lead, the lead in this, and I think was, they actually wanted help to fly for it and everything. She will be here to speak this to us next week at the regular meeting. There is a, a ten percent local match that goes with that, which ten percent of that could be just under twelve thousand and five hundred dollars on that. This came about, to a certain extent, from, I think, our principal at Sullivan East High School had requested that we look at this, trying to look at something where we could get a track light, caution lighting there or something. And this kind of snowballed into, well, you know, we'll just kind of take it, or maybe we didn't take a look at the entire corridor that are coming out of Bristol. So Bristol has worked with us on this to kind of get some information together. Anyway, I'm hoping you'll support this. It's, it's going to provide some great information that I think T-Dot's already actually hired the, the engineering study group that does these and everything. So we'll talk more about it next, next week. Thank you.
Any questions for sponsor? Dean, I will introduce that way to you on next Thursday. Out of number eight, Commissioner Akerd wants to get another copy.
Keeping that copier flowing.
He doesn't have a copier business, does he?
Get back to the slow class.
Okay, out of, out of number nine, Commissioner Joyce Neil Crosswatch, you're recognized on out of number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, so let's just go ahead and approve this and go home. How's that? This is a resolution of you on the executive committee, you've already heard it, that this is to secure funds from the Saints from the Bloods Museum. And it's at the Impact Center in Blood City, in Silver Rock building. And what we're going to use, I can read this whole plan to you if you'd like. I mean, twenty-five thousand dollars, we've had, with your resolution, you also got a packet that shows some pictures of items we brought in the museum. And we also have our business plan. We also have our nonprofit status, it's, we're just waiting, it's ready, it was built like that. We've got our tax ID, we just need some money. We've had a few donors give us some funds, but mostly this stuff is coming out of our pockets, the board's pockets. So twenty-five thousand dollars is going to bring a lot of education. We're planning on getting school trips through there. It's going to bring people to this area. I had somebody tell me, and I take a vacation, say, you Gary, somebody asked you about in a, in a Kingsport ballgame, if he knew about the museum. So the word's out, so we won't hinge, and we desperately did give this money. And I don't know, we'll put on the way, the rules are first reading, you know, kind of.
You can decide next year, we'll get that next week. Anybody got questions for Joyce? I'd love to do that. I believe you have a question. Yeah, I got you. I just turned on. Without laying a hand.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry about that. Commissioner Crosswatch, is this a one-time cost?
Yes, I failed to mention that. It's really a one-time cost until, you know, it's coming here next year, who might know. But right now, this ain't one time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Darlene, I failed to put your name on this. Did you not want to be a co-sponsor, so you'll be our Darlene twice? And anybody else that'd like to co-sponsor?
I'm not going to recognize co-sponsors, they'll just be four. Dwight, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been involved with this from the very get-go on it. And we've come a long way with what we've done. If you look through this, you can see the inside of this building. This is a, it was a rock building that sat out behind the Blood City Middle School. And it was a shop at one time. And by looking through this, you can see all of the work that's already been done. And we've come a long way, but we're at the point now, this money would help us as far as, we're going to have to have a secretary, we're going to have to have, and, and what we're looking at and what we're kind of gearing this for is school groups. To where we, they can bring, you know, these school groups in. And we're hoping to have a little souvenir corner to where they can purchase stuff. And, you know, you know, a, a way that we can make some money to, you know, support this and move forward. You know, we, we need office equipment and, and stuff like that to, to really get this thing up and going. And that's the reason Joyce has brought this to us, to ask for the money to move this forward and, and get it open and, and get it to where it can stand on its own. And I'm like Joyce, I think this will be a one-time deal. That once we get the, the basics and the necessities that we have to have, you know, just like anything else, you got to have, you know, cleaning supplies, and you got to have stuff for your bathrooms and all that kind of stuff. And right now, we don't, you know, we're just getting from donations. And the community has stepped up, and there's a lot of this stuff has been donated to, to us as far as the displays. And we're looking at having revolving displays to where if a school group comes in in the fall, and they come back in the spring, it'll be something completely different. And if you look in the back, there is. And if you look in the back, there is the presentation room, and if I'm not mistaken, that was the seats that come out of the old courthouse here. So, you know, there's, and it's got a big audio screen in front of it now, so, you know, there's, you can sit down and show all kinds of presentations and stuff, so I think it's a worthwhile deal. I think it'd be a good investment for not only Blood City, but Sullivan County, and, you know, even though it is in Blood City, it's not going to be strictly for Blood City, it's going to be the Holston River Valley is what we're going to show and try to educate people who, especially all the people that's coming into this area, you know, where we came from and where we've been and what our future is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Commissioner Harper?
Just a quick question, is this going to be a county-maintained building, or is this belonging to the?
No, sir, it's a privately-owned building, but we're, he's letting us use it.
So we're responsible for utilities and all the other?
He's taking care of utilities, items like that, but we're, he, this person has said so much to, we would not have a museum without him. We're actually putting the artifacts in the museum. And this brings up too, I was supposed to ask you all to come over and visit us, because the pictures that you see on this, they're, we've done a whole lot more. It's worth filling in that face, but no, you.
Congratulations, it sounded like a labor of love there.
It is, it really is, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harper. Commissioner Glover?
Thank you, Mayor. There are some folks that's involved in this museum that have a lot of ties to history and have a lot of folks in the county that's donated things for the museum over the period it's been in the process. If anybody knows Betsy Carrier from Blood City, she is probably one of the sharpest history buffs in this area as far as knowing and can tell you things that's happened in Blood City and surrounding area. Mary Ann Hager, she's involved in this, it's a great group of people that's totally focused on getting this opened in the next little bit. It's right in the middle of downtown Blood City, right behind the old Blood City Middle School. The rock building that it's in used to be, I think, part of the old school years ago, and it was turned into a shop when I went there, and then it's, it's a great location, it's going to bring tourism to the area. I think it's going to be a very positive impact on Blood City and Blountville, because people come here to visit, and just like Ms. Crosswatch said, people in Kingsport's already talking about it, so I think it's a worthwhile investment for us to come on board and help with it, and appreciate y'all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Commissioner Crosswatch, have any final words?
Yes, I failed to mention, we're partnering with other museums in the area, and we're from Rocky Mount, Sycamore Shelves, of course, with our archives and tourism here in Sullivan County, Bristol Historical, you name it, they've all been over there, and they've helped us, they've showed us what we need to do, and we're partnering with them, so this is, this is going to be good for the whole region. It's going to be a showplace, I assure you that, so thank you.
Commissioner Harper, you have?
One last question, are you on a website, and we have designed a website?
Not yet, we're getting there, but not yet.
Later.
Right, yes.
Thank you. Be on first reading on Thursday. Next up, out of the superintendent commissioner, Dwight King here. Joyce, did you have something else? Okay, Chris King here. Push your button up. Still got Joyce up there for somebody.
Hey.
You're on.
This resolution is to amend funding to the Piney Flats Volunteer Fire Department for the amount of one hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to provide consistently with funding of the Indian Springs Satellite Fire Department. Several months ago, it was brought up that the Indian Springs Volunteer Fire Department was asking Sullivan County for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help with their satellite, and it's actually through the Sullivan County Fire Department here at Blountville, and it would be their satellite, but it would be in Indian Springs. Several years ago, Piney Flats did the same thing. They established a satellite fire department, and they was not provided a dime from the county for any additional funding to cover the station or any of the trucks, and I know when they first started, they built a pretty simple building. They borrowed a tanker from the Forest Service, and that's how they kind of got along to, you know, they got established. And back then, I know that if they could have got some money from Sullivan County, it sure helped them establish and get going on what they were trying to do, and that was to provide the citizens of Piney Flats in that area, and not only was it the Piney Flats area, but it was the area around their port. There was kind of a donut, donut, a donut-shaped form there that there was not any coverage, and with their satellite, they were the closest volunteer fire department, and they did cover a lot of those big homes around the lake in that area, so, but I think this is only to be fair with Piney Flats. If we're going to give Indian Springs and, you know, the Sullivan Fire Department the money to provide for a truck, I think is what they're going to do with this, actually do with this money, but, you know, if we're going to be fair with one department, I think we need to be fair with all, and Piney Flats, like I said, they did not receive any money out from Sullivan County, so I'm asking to, for Sullivan County to step up and be fair with Piney Flats as they're going to do with Indian Springs.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Commissioner Murray, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Dwight, I was trying, didn't, Piney Flats, didn't they have a station or something down on Rock Springs Road or something like that?
That's it.
Is that it? Okay.
That's it.
Is it still there?
It's still there.
Okay.
They, as they got funds, they redone it and updated it.
Yeah.
But that's where they started. It was just a cinder block building with a roof on it, basically, is what it started, two bays, and now it's, they've done some improvements on it, as they got money, and, you know, it's really.
And they're still operating there, right?
Still operating.
Okay, I didn't know.
Nice to today, and they was, they had the doors open.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley.
Dwight, does the Piney Flats Fire Department, do they, are they part of our truck rotation?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was asking, to see if we're in it or not, we needed to add them to it.
And the satellite, that's included in the whole department. It's, what they usually do is put the older trucks at the satellite as they replace a truck, is what they usually do, you know, take one of the older trucks and take it down there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crosswatch.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Dwight, one question is answered, so they're utilizing their old truck at the substation, correct?
Right.
Down on Indian Springs, they got the, they got the substation, because the community chess actually donated most of the money, so it's, how did Piney Flats do their substation? How'd they build it?
Private donations.
Private donations, and do you know in the county, Dwight, how many substations there are?
I'm not worried that there's any.
Besides it, there'll be any trains in Piney Flats?
Right.
So if we give you a hundred and fifty, then somebody else's help will come back in and?
No. Unless, you know.
Okay, all right, all right.
If there's no other substation now, no.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing now, this will be on first reading on next Thursday. Why, when did it build that substation?
Late nineties.
Late nineties, okay, thank you. Any, that was our last resolution that we have on our agenda tonight, we may have more by next, more good ideas by next Thursday night. I will tell you, if you have any good ideas, have those good ideas by us on Wednesday at twelve noon, if you will, so that we may prepare your partners and your colleagues for an additional thing. Anybody else got anything they're gonna? Our guest back here from Westridge, I've had some questions from commissioners, how do they get to view this? Is this being livestreamed?
This is livestreamed on the Westridge High School YouTube channel until we get the commission YouTube channel up and going. It'll be moved over there, where I'll upload all the ones we've already recorded, I'll re-upload them to the new channel once it's up and going.
Okay, and can you, well, I'm not very computer savvy, and I have a hard time finding YouTube, so if you could get some, we'll distribute information on watching themselves, if you can get that to my secretary.
I'll, hopefully by the next, by next week, we'll have the commission YouTube channel up and going, and then you can watch it on the YouTube channel, but also, if you share the link on Facebook, you should be able to watch it right there on Facebook or wherever else you want to share it.
Very good, I have a few questions about it, and I didn't have a clue to an answer. Thank you for being here. Okay, anybody else? Another thing? Ah, Gary, and Sam's gone, so Gary gets to be the last.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to invite everyone out, tomorrow night is our Fun Fest Parade and kickoff at six-thirty in Kingsport. We have a lot of events coming up this next week, and my favorite one is Taste of the Tri-Cities, there across from DB. Come out and join us, love to have a, we'll have a big crowd out for the parade tomorrow night.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, Dwight, I've still got you on, Dwight, you got a hot mic?
I'm sorry.
No, it's all right, I didn't know if you wanted to be recognized or not. Herschel, do you want to be recognized?
Mayor, I'd like to inform the commission that our finance committee meeting is canceled for in the morning.
Thank you.
Commissioner Crawford is out of town, and we've got some things that's coming up, but we'll have a, maybe a special call meeting before next month, I'll get Mr. Bailey there and see if we need to do that before then, but the meeting in the morning for the finance committee is canceled.
Thank you for reminding me of that. Herschel, I had forgotten, we would have left you with that. Commissioner, hey, I'll be early for that one. Mr. Stanley, you're recognized.
If anybody's interested to see how these pageants are ran, they are having the Miss Kingsport Sullivan County this Sunday at two o'clock at the Toy Reed, if anybody wants to come. I think there's thirteen candidates.
Okay, anything else? I believe that's got Sam left. We're doing.